All our reorganization meeting for the new Board of Commissioners, terms starting January, 2nd and January 3rd, and today is the reorganization meeting, January 6, 2025. Can everyone please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Auditor Yoder, you can lead us in prayer, please.
Let us pray. Thank you, Lord, for our country and our community. Lord, we ask that all decisions made today and with this new board going forward have your wisdom and your grace on them. I ask for your protection for all the new public officials and also that they would all have your grace and your wisdom. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Okay, if we can all please remain standing and let's have a moment of silence for the passing of our 39th President Jimmy Carter. The President has ordered all flags at half masks on the White House and public buildings for the next 30 days. If we can have a moment Hey, thank you. Okay, this meeting is called to order for the purpose of reorganizing the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners for the year 2025 and to transact any and all business that may come before the Board. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Malloy?
Here.
Let the record show on roll call that Commissioner Tony Bernard, Commissioner Rick Hernandez, and Commissioner Danny Malloy are here present, that they have been duly sworn and otherwise qualified and have posted bond or have have been duly covered by courses, employee dishonesty slash faithful performance of duty coverage according to the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code, and that they are duly elected members of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners.
Okay, before before we get to the next part, first thing I want to do as President now is thank everybody for the last two years that we've had. They were very, very difficult times to be a county employee and but we worked to move forward the best way we can. We have a new board now. It's a bright, fresh new day with a lot of new faces here in Trumbull County. And I wish everybody the best of luck and I pledge and promise that they're going to see progress in Trumbull County and tomorrow will be a better day than today and we're going to strive for the next tomorrows each and every time we attend a meeting. Nominations will now be entertained for the position of President of the Board of County Commissioners for one year effectively or effective immediately. And I would make a motion to place Rick Hernandez in nomination for President of the Board of County Commissioners for one year effective immediately.
I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, with discussion, I think both of these gentlemen are highly capable and competent to serve as President of this Board. They both have a pedigree of public service. They both have a pedigree of love of their country and their community and are schooled and educated in Robert's Rules of Order. I was honored to be President for the last two terms and it'll be nice to step back aside and let somebody else take the reins for a while. And I pledge to assist both of you in any endeavors we have in the future and we're going to do great things here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Discussion over that, I want to thank you for the two years that you did put in. It was tumultuous. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Bernard. You're going to see a much different board here and it'll start today. Like I said, that we've had some dark times in the county, but the sun will start shining here in this room. So it's a pleasure and an honor and to be elected President of this Board. Thank you.
I just like to say that I agree with both Commissioner Malloy and Commissioner Hernandez. I think you're going to find that this Board may not always agree, but when we disagree, we're going to do it respectfully and hopefully we can move things ahead and do a lot of good things for the people of Trumbull County. So I'm looking forward to it and looking forward to voting for Mr. Hernandez.
Okay, Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Do you want to make the motion for Vice President?
Thank you.
Item two.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to place the name of Commissioner Danny Malloy for nomination for Vice President of the Board of County Commissioners in the event that the President is unavailable to serve as the Chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Yes. The Chair is now turned over to the appointed President of the Board after declaring the validity of Rick Hernandez as President. Mr. Hernandez, your gavel.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
You got one hand to use it.
I do have a larger one that I'll bring in next week. Not as big as food is, by the way. Let's see, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk.
Okay, item number three, Robert's Rules of Order shall be the official guidelines for conducting meetings for one year effective immediately.
I move to approve the motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number four, regular meeting day shall be set for Wednesday at 10:30 a.m. weekly, and if a legal holiday falls on a Monday or Tuesday within the meeting week, the work session and regular meeting shall be moved forward one day as set forth by the Board.
Make that motion that we set the work session for Tuesdays at 10:30 and the regular meeting day for Wednesdays at 10:30 a.m.
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Item number five is to adopt the following resolution, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Trumbull County encourage all interested citizens of Trumbull County to attend meetings of the Board, and whereas Section 121.22 requires certain actions by every by every public body, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Trumbull County that the following rules are established. Number one, a schedule of regular meetings shall be posted on the Commissioner's website and placed in the Commissioner's showcase located on the fifth floor of the Administration Building. Regular meetings shall be held on such dates except for legal holidays and days on which a majority of the Board may not be present. Number two, special meeting notices, including a summary of the purpose of said meeting, shall be posted in the manner provided above, provided however that said notices shall be posted at least 24 hours prior to the special meeting. Number three, any person may request advance notification of all meetings of the Board at which any specific type of public business is to be discussed by providing the clerk with a self-addressed stamp envelope for this purpose. In the case of special emergency meetings, the clerk shall make a reasonable effort to notify persons requesting notice by telephone and/or email. Number four, any news media requesting notification of special meetings shall be given 24-hour advance notice and immediate notice of any emergency meetings by telephone and/or email. Number five, any persons or any representative of the news media shall declare their desire in writing for notifications of meetings by January 31, 2025, or notification will be discontinued.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Item number six is to authorize Rick Hernandez, newly elected President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute any pending applications and contracts previously authorized to be executed by past Board Presidents. In the special note, the Vice President will execute any pending applications and contracts previously authorized to be executed by past Board Presidents in the event that the President is not available to do so.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Mr. Bernard.
Mr. Bernard.
Malloy?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number seven is to renew the resolution as amended, previously adopted by the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on March 9, 1995, approving the issuance of credit cards in the name of Trumbull County and designated county offices and individuals authorized to use specific credit cards as listed in Exhibits A through LL and exempting all credit card purchases from the advanced estimate required. Amended resolution provides for work-related travel or specifically airliner train tickets as an allowable credit card use. Renewal period is for the year 2025.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, discussion with this. Gentlemen, this is something we've chose not to as past Boards even get a credit card. We don't have to get one if you don't want one. All authorized purchases can come through, share our clerk. In case we need one, this just gives us the authorization to use one if we need one.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number eight is to grant permission to the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to attend meetings of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio Committee Meetings and all other pertinent Commissioners Meetings and any meeting concerning township, county, state, or federal matters, including meetings events sponsored by the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber of Commerce, Leadership Mahoning Valley, Valley Economic Partners, East Gate Regional Council of Governments, Northeast Ohio Trade and Economic Consortium, and the Stark Trumbull Area Board of Realtors during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number nine is to adopt a resolution setting forth new mileage rates effective January 1, 2025 pursuant to the Internal Revenue Service and Treasury Department's 2025 optional standard mileage rates. The rate will be 70 cents per mile for all business miles.
Motion approved? Second.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number 10 is to adopt a resolution to designate the official representative and alternate for the purposes of voting at the annual meeting of the County Commissioners Association of Ohio in 2025.
I'd like to place the name of Commissioner Rick Hernandez and Commissioner Danny Malloy.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 11 is to authorize payment of $13,776 for the Trumbull County's membership dues for the calendar year 2025 to the County Commissioners Association of Ohio.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Item number 12 is to authorize payment of $4,040 for Trumbull County's membership dues to National Association of Counties for the period of January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Item number 13 is to approve the ending appropriation resolution of Trumbull County for the fiscal year 2024 for all funds.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 14 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 3701.0231, to authorize the mandated payment in the amount of $483,332.81 to the Ohio Department of Health for the 2025 Children with Medical Handicaps Program. This amount equals 1/10 of 1 mil of Trumbull County's total property tax valuation.
Motion approve the item?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 15 is to approve the professional consulting service agreement between the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners and Maximus Consulting Services, Inc., to provide professional cost plan consulting services to perform the annual update and implementation of Trumbull County's indirect cost allocation plan, the cost allocation study for 2024, 2025, 2026, and to authorize Rick Hernandez, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute said agreement on behalf of Trumbull County. The agreement is effective for the term commencing January 1, 2024 and ending March 31, 2028. Trumbull County agrees to pay total compensation in the amount of $45,750 paid annually in the amount of $15,250 for you.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 16 is to designate the Trumbull County Planning Commission as the County Office of Economic Development. In accordance with ORC Section 307.07A1, the Office of Economic Development shall carry out all duties as the Director of Economic Development as defined in ORC Section 307.07B for a term commencing January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number 17, Trumbull County Planning Commission is requesting that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners designate Mr. Nicholas Coggins, Assistant Director of the Planning Commission, as the Enterprise Zone Manager for Trumbull County.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 18 pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 153.68, to authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise and solicit for 2025 Statement of Qualifications from professional design firms for the purpose of creating a pre-qualified list of professional design firms willing to provide professional design services in Trumbull County for future projects with an estimated professional design fee of under $50,000.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Item number 19 is to grant permission to Dr. Lawrence D'Amico and investigators of Trumbull County Coroner's Office to attend the annual conference and the regional meeting of the Ohio State Coroner's Association during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 20 is to to grant permission to Julie Green, Director of the Trumbull County Planning Commission, and staff to attend meetings of the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, Ohio Department of Transportation, U.S. Department of Defense, Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber of Commerce, East Gate Regional Council of Governments, and all other meetings of importance concerning county, state, or federal issues relating to county planning commission matters during 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With discussion. Julie, thank you very much for your services and what you provide the county. It doesn't go unnoticed. You do a great job. Thank you.
Second that.
I think Bernard.
No, I'm seconding and congratulating.
Okay, so I'll call the roll. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item number 21 is to grant permission to Tacey McDonough, Director, Trumbull County 911 Center, and staff to attend 911 meetings, trainings, and classes held by the following entities, AppCo, NINA, Ohio 911 Program Office, and any other pertinent meetings or trainings related to Trumbull County 911 Center during 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 22 is to grant permission to Michael Slawinski, Trumbull County Chief Building Official and Staff, to attend Ohio Board of Building Standards Certification Training Seminars and other building inspection training and support classes during 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Item 23 is to grant permission to Alexandra Devenjenzie-Bush, Human Resources Director and Staff, to attend meetings of the Ohio Public Employer Labor Relations Association, the Public Risk Management Association, County Loss Control Coordinators Association of Ohio, County Risk Sharing Authority, Trumbull County Educational Service Center, AFSMI Care Plan, Northeast Ohio Safety Council, Ohio Civil Rights Commission, State Employment Relations Board, Bureau of Workers Compensation, SHRM-CP Trainings and Webinars and other meetings relating to this department included but not limited to the Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, and with discussion, Alex, thank you for the work that you do. It doesn't go unnoticed. She does a very good job here at the county and I've been watching her do it for many, well, past couple of years I've been coming here and I'm glad to have you on board. Thank you.
I only have a comment that, I'm not sure what you did in the past, but I know what you've done for us coming through the door and we really appreciate that and I'm sure the other public officials do too. So I'd like to thank you and your staff.
I can say that in the past since she's been here, rock star employee, rock star.
Let's give her a hand of applause.
Correct.
We'll be getting your autograph after the...
Okay. Okay, item number 24 is to grant permission to John Gargano, Director of Trumbull County Department of Job and Family Services, as well as other appropriate staff members, including the Trumbull County Child Support Enforcement Agency and Workforce Development Board members, to attend state and district meetings sponsored by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, meetings of the Ohio Job and Family Service Directors Association, and the Ohio Child Support Enforcement Agency Directors Association, and meetings for the Northeast Ohio Directors Association, as well as other meetings of importance concerning state or federal job and family services or Child Support Enforcement Agency matters during the calendar year 2025.
Motion approved?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
And kudos to Mr. Gargano also. He's not here to accept it, but he's been a pleasure to work with the last couple of years and I think you gentlemen will enjoy working with him also.
Item number 25 is to authorize the attendance of Mike Salamone, Trumbull County Transit Administrator, to attend meetings, trainings, and events sponsored by or relative to the Federal Transit Administration, Ohio Department of Transportation, East Gate Council Regional of Governments, NEARIDE, and other transit-related matters during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 26 is to grant permission to Dawn Zinni, Trumbull County Recorder and staff, staff members to attend meetings of the Ohio Recorders Association, committee meetings, and meetings concerning county, state, or federal matters during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 27 is to grant permission to Dimitri Leogus, Administrator of the Workforce Development Board of Trumbull County, and other appropriate staff and board members to attend all meetings, trainings, seminars, and events sponsored by or relative to state and federal meetings, WIOA, Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, Ohio Penn, Business Resource Network, Mahoning Valley Manufacturers Coalition, Ohio Workforce Association, Youngstown Warren Regional Chamber of Commerce, Tri-State Energy, and Advanced Manufacturing Consortium, Retain Employees/Talent After Injury Network, opioid grants, other special grants received, as well as other functions affiliated with workforce development during 2025.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 28 is to approve the current rules governing employee requests for reimbursement for travel expenses. This is mileage and meal allowance while traveling on county business during the year 2025.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
See, the President doesn't do motions unless it's the last.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item number 29 is to continue the current seller's agreement with GovDeals, Inc. GovDeals will provide a means for Trumbull County to list items for sale and for potential buyers to bid upon these items via an internet-based auction system.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 30, to adopt a formal resolution of intent to conduct an internet auction for the sale of unneeded, obsolete, or unfit county personal property in calendar year 2025 pursuant to ORC Section 307.12.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 31 is to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested on the liquor parent applications as listed. So we have a new, which is CEC Entertainment, Inc., doing business as Chuck E. Cheese in Howland Township. Next, Jet Black, Capital LLC, and that's Bezetta Township. And then there's a transfer, J. Umea, Quick Stop, Inc., doing business as Five Points County Mart, and that's in Hartford Township.
Motion to approve?
I'll second and discussion. When did Chuck E. Cheese start serving liquor? There's moms all over the valley lighting up very happy right now. There's wine on the menu at Chuck E. Cheese.
It'll enhance their business, I'm sure, with the parents.
Call the vote?
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Item 32 is to receive the request from Natalie Rothenbucker, Esquire, Attorney for the Petitioner, Life Storage LP, requesting to withdraw the petition for annexation of approximately 7.9561 acres of land, parcel number 28-522200, also known as 3942 Youngstown Road, located in Howland Township to the City of Warren, Trumbull County, Ohio, filed with the Board of Commissioners on November 22, 2024.
Motion to approve?
filed with the Board of Commissioners on November 22, 2024.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes.
Okay, that didn't hurt. It went too quick. But that's what we expect. That concludes our regular business for the county. We will now open it up for public comment for the good of Trumbull County. If you have a comment, if you would please come to the podium, give your name, and...
Just the name and where they're from.
Do you want me to do this now?
You can announce it at any time.
Hello.
Hi, Ms. Campbell.
Marleye Campbell, Trumbull County resident. Made a special trip down here today to welcome the two new commissioners. Rick, congratulations on being President of the Board.
Thank you.
The meeting was very smooth. What was really nice is we can actually hear you because you have your microphone up. You know, so it'll be better on the recordings as well. But just...
He has a little experience with microphones.
I am a little bit of a musician, too.
So just welcome. I know you guys are gonna do great things.
Thank you. Thank you, Marleye. Thank you very much. Any other comments? No? Do we have phone lines? No.
Optional.
Optional, okay. Okay, so that would conclude our meeting today. Our next public workshop will be held on Tuesday, January 7, 2025 at 10:30 a.m. in this room. And then our next regularly meeting will be held Thursday, January 8, 2025, 10:30 a.m. in this meeting room.
Mr. President, I'd also like to say tomorrow, all department heads are invited and encouraged to be here.
Oh, wait, this is Thursday. It should be Wednesday.
Should be Wednesday.
Yeah, this will be held, yeah, Wednesday, January, it is the 8th. Okay, 2025, yes, on a Wednesday.
Sorry about that.
Chuck E. Cheese.
Yeah, tomorrow, all department heads are encouraged to be here so we can kind of sink our teeth into meeting the new Board and hearing from you as far as your wants and needs. And then Commissioner Bernard, I believe Wednesday, you had something? Elected officials you wanted to invite for Wednesday's meeting?
Oh, well, yeah. We can do tomorrow, too, for that.
Elected official Wednesday, tomorrow was gonna be department heads, and both.
Yes, after our regular meeting on Wednesday, we'd like to invite all the public officials, and they can bring some of their staff. We're gonna have little refreshments here, coffee and doughnuts, and just let everybody meet everybody. So if we could notify all the public officials, I think what that says is, you know, we have a different Board, we have a different attitude, and we're all gonna be on the same page, and we're all gonna get along. I know it's the first day, but you know, you don't know how nice it is to walk in there and see everybody smiling. And we just need to keep that up.
I second that.